Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Well, the special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, August 12, 2020, please come to order. For the benefit of all of us, as this is a virtual planning and zoning meeting, our procedures will be as follows. One, when you first enter the meeting, you will arrive in a virtual waiting room until the meeting host admits you. Two, please be aware that your camera, if you have one in your microphone, will be muted by the meeting host when you enter the meeting. You can turn on your camera at any time so you can see and be seen by others if you so choose. In order to run an efficient and orderly meeting in this new virtual environment, unless stated otherwise by the meeting chairman during the meeting, the meeting host will keep everyone other than the commission members muted. You will still be able to hear everything said by the commission members even if you are muted and/or your microphone is not on. There will be the opportunity for public comment during the hearings, at which time public participants will be unmuted. Three, the secretary will read the legal call of the meeting as published according to Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7B. Four, during the public hearing, the applicant will be invited to present the application, explain to the commission and others present what is being requested. The meeting host will share all related documents on screen as needed. In addition, all applications and supporting materials for each application on the agenda are available through the public meeting calendar page on the town website, www.cigilfordct.us, and also through a direct link on the planning and zoning page. Five, comments of town agencies will be read for each application, if there are any. There will be clarifying questions from commissioners. Six, there will then be the opportunity for clarifying questions from the audience. Please raise your hand in the Zoom platform and wait to be called on and unmuted. Seven, the applicant will then have the opportunity to address any questions or concerns raised by the public commissions. Eight, once the public hearing is closed, the applicant is free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearing and the regular meeting, during which time the commission will try to reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as the decision of this commission and has the right to appeal to Superior Court if desired. Nine, decisions of this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling the Planning and Zoning Office at (203) 453-8039, or emailing planning.zoning@ci.gilfordct.us after 9:00 a.m. And all actions taken by this commission will be by a roll call vote. All commissioners and staff will identify themselves for the record before speaking. See that this evening are the following members, and I'd ask you to raise your hand as I call your names. Richard Walsh, where are you, Richard?
I'm here.
I know he's here somewhere. There he is, Richard. Scott Edman, both, thank you, sir. Amy Stein.
Hi.
Frank DeAndrea. Alan Brown. Bill Freeman, our newest member, welcome. And I'm Phil Johnson. Staff President George Crawl, our town planner. Aaron Mannix, the zoning enforcement officer. Lisa Piambino, the Planning and Zoning Administrative Assistant. This meeting is being recorded via the Zoom platform and will be made available on the town website for viewing. The secretary will now read the legal notice. Richard, do you have that?
I have it in front of me, Mr. Chairman.
If you've been read the legal notice, it would be much appreciated.
Notice is hereby given that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on August 5, 2020. Due to COVID-19 situation, this meeting will be conducted through a web and phone meeting Attendees are advised not to go to the regular community center location because a physical meeting will not take place. See below the following Zoom instructions. The following applications will be heard. Town of Guilford, Noble Bridge, Colonial Road, Coastal Area Management Application for Bridge Reconstruction. Forgive me for pronunciation, Calpech, Pato, Patel, Moya Burgers, 1919. Boston Post Road Unit 210, Map 79, Lot 35, Special Permit to Revise the Sign Package by Increasing the Size of the Sign and Allowing an Additional Sign on the Side of the Building. Susan H. Vining, 23 Lover's Lane, Map 40, Lot 139B, Zone R3, Special Permit to Add an Attached 830 Square Foot Accessory Apartment. The proposal included a 484-square-foot detached two-car garage patio and pat access path. Mark Knapp, 94 Great Harbor Road, Map Lot 7, Lot 7, Zone RS1, Special Permit in Coastal Area Management to Build a New Home on a lot of 10,000 square feet. Deborah and William Zimmerman, 1107 West Lake Avenue, Map 95, Lot 42-3, Zone R5, Special Permit for a Two-Car Garage over 750,000...
Nope.
750...
Perfect.
750. Yeah, corrected. 258, 258 to 260 River Street LLC, 258 River Street, Map 46, Lot 48, Zone PV, R3 Coastal Area Management and Site Plan for Modification of the Original Approval for Assault Spa, Including Facade Changes, Parking Lot, and Stonewall Changes. Copies of these applications are available for inspection on the town's website, www.cigilfordct.us, all lowercase. Every person may attend by either phone or web connection and shall be heard pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order 7B. Any materials relevant to matters on the agenda, including but not limited to the materials related to specific applications, if applicable, shall be submitted to the agency a minimum of 24 hours prior and posted to the agency's website for public inspection prior to, during, and after meetings. And any exhibits to be submitted by members of the public shall, to be to the extent feasible, be submitted to the agency a minimum of 24 hours prior to the and posted on the agency's website for public inspection prior to, during, and after the meeting. All respondents shall be submitted to planning.zoning@ci.gilfordct.us. Documents are available at the Planning and Zoning Office at (3453) 8039 for assistance. In accordance to the Governor's Executive Order 71B, this legal notice is being published on the Town of Guilford website, www.cigilford.us, dated at this 24th day of July, 2020. Philip Johnson, Chair.
Thank you. Obviously, this is an extension of our meeting from last week, and we asked that we move this one to the 12th because so many residents and members were without both electricity and internet. So this is actually just the continuation of the meeting from the 5th. So the first order, the first item on the agenda is Town of Guilford, Noble Bridge, Colonial Road, Coastal Area Management Application for Bridge Construction. I believe Janice is the person that's presenting.
Yes, thank you.
Please come forward.
Janice Plaziac, Town of Guilford, Town Engineer. I'm presenting on behalf of the town tonight a project to replace the existing pedestrian bridge on Colonial Road, which is known as Noble Bridge. The bridge has deteriorated and has been closed since last September for use due to the deterioration. We have received so far our permit from DEEP, which is a COP, and we also have a letter from Army Corps of Engineers noting that it falls under the general permitting. What we're basically going to be doing as part of this project is dismantling the existing bridge. It's 142 feet long, two abutments with a center pier, a steel bridge with a wood decking. It's about seven feet wide in total because it's a pedestrian bridge. It's used for access by the community to connect Chimney Corners Road up to points north on Colonial Road, as well as parking for that neighborhood, as well as the Satiem's Head Yacht Club. So it's an important connection. It's also important for the community, which sees flooding on Chimney Corners Road and can cause some access challenges for some of the houses and the yacht club on Chimney Corners Road at certain times, and this provides a route in and out for them. The bridge is, as I said, going to be replaced. It's going to be dismantled. The existing abutments and piers will be reused. There's some minor work to be done to the abutments to drill new anchor holes for the anchor bolts and some work to be done on the center pier, at the base of the pier, to chink in some of the openings in the stone portion of the pier and to re-point those areas to maintain, you know, its integrity going forward. And then on the southern abutment, you can see from the picture that's on the screen now, some of the large dimensional stone that was placed at the time of construction of the bridge was dislodged, I believe during either Irene and/or Sandy. We just want to put those back into place. They're on site already and just make sure they're moved back into place, one or two are in the water that need to be moved back up, and then others just need to be reset. We currently are going out to bid for the contractor to get on board. The town is purchasing the bridge directly itself from the original manufacturer of the bridge, so the bridge will come in already, you know, put together. It just needs to be assembled on site to protect when during demolition or it's probably more like dismantling of the old bridge, we'll have the contractor protect from any debris falling into the water, obviously, and do a clean job of that. Expecting either heavy equipment, like a large excavator and/or crane equipment, to be utilized to remove large sections and then also place the new bridge into position. It's a pretty straightforward project. There's really no earth disturbance. It's really all hardscape work, and we're looking to try and complete this project by the end of November because the lead time on ordering the bridge is about 10 to 12 weeks. We're finalizing the structural plans now with the bridge manufacturer to get them started with production.
Quick question, when was the original bridge built? I'm just curious.
So this bridge was put into place in, I believe, 1982 by the town at the time, sharing the cost with the Satiem's Head Association. Prior to that, it was a vehicle bridge, you know, carried cars over it that fell into disrepair. It was, I believe, owned by a private individual who then deeded it to the town. It fell into disrepair. I think it was out of service for a while as any bridge, and then it was decided to replace it with the pedestrian bridge around 1982.
And then another just kind of sidebar question. Why is this before us instead of the Satiem's Head Association?
Um, I believe we take, because it's not an actual parcel in the Satiem's Head Association. I came to you before with the Falcon Road seawall project as well, so I believe you have authority since it's the town. Maybe Planning and Zoning staff can help with that one.
I passed it to you, Janice.
Those big stones that dislodged, are they going to be...
Here from Kent.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
I said, you listening to me?
Yes, Alan.
Okay. I said, those big stones that were dislodged in Sandy or whatever storm, when they're put back in place, are they going to be secured so the next time we have a huge storm, they won't dislodge? Or are they just going to be put in place?
They'll just be put in place. They were never mortared in, and they're actually not part of the abutment. The abutment is a poured concrete abutment. They just provide a visually pleasant look to the front of that abutment, so we're going to put them in place, back in place.
So it's cosmetic, then?
Yeah, they're really, I mean, they probably protect the abutment, but they're not actually the abutment, so yeah.
Thank you. We have a letter here from Kevin McGee, environmental planner, which I'll read in the record, RE Coastal Area Management Review, Town of Guilford Engineering Department, Old Bridge, Colonial Road. "The Town of Guilford is looking to replace the existing footbridge, which connects Colonial Road to Prospect Avenue utilizing existing stone piers. The work also includes the resetting of large stones damaged by previous storms. The proposed walkway bridge is consistent with the general public access to coastal waters policy of the State of Connecticut Coastal Area Management Act, since it provides public viewing areas to Satiem's Head Harbor. The coastal resource policies applicable for the area are coastal hazard area, rocky shorefront coastal waters, estuaran embarkments, and tidal wetlands. The work being conducted has limited chance of causing adverse impact to the adjacent coastal resources since the work is utilizing the existing piers." Thank you, Kevin McGee.
She also have...
So, I'm sorry, Aaron.
No, go ahead.
This is George. Yeah. One important thing about this bridge, I think, which maybe is of interest to the commission and not the public, is that I think it's clear, and it will be even more clear, since the town is spending some of its money on rehabilitating this, that this bridge is open to the public. You don't have to be a resident of Satiem's Head to use this pedestrian facility, as is the case with the roads down there. They are town roads. So the public has the right to pass and repass over this bridge, I believe.
Yes, that's correct, George.
And there is, to the best of my knowledge, there's parking on Colonial Road west of Falcon Road below where it comes on, not a ton, but there is some, so if anyone's interested in parking down there and walking on the bridge once it's done, so. Anything else we need to know, Aaron and/or Janice, in terms of this, a cam?
We do have an NDB determination for the property as well. If you'd like to enter that into the record, I believe our species of concern is the purple martins.
Right. Yeah, so one of the requirements was that we not construct until after July 31st, so we've met that threshold right now.
I can't see that well enough to read it, so.
Is it too small?
No.
Oh.
This is so frustrating.
I'm working on a smaller machine.
Okay.
Do you want to tackle that one, or do you want, if someone else can?
Yeah, I mean, we can read it if you'd like.
You want to give us the abbreviated version?
It was essentially what Janice had said. The purple marten is a species of special concern that are located in the vicinity of the project site. They nest between early June and late July, and recommended protection strategies for the purple marten would be that work not begin until after July 31st. Staging of materials shouldn't occur directly near their colony and to coordinate with the purple marten house owners where they nest to ensure that access box, that access to the box is not impeded to allow routine inspections. That was the extent of that.
So that would be a condition of any proposed motion. If you could enter that into the record to have that on file, that would be great. Anything else we need to do on this one?
As it is a public hearing, we can open it to the public now. I think I saw an individual with her hand raised, Catherine Churchill.
Sure, so.
Hi.
If you could, if you could just state your name and address for the record, and then your question would be welcomed.
Hi, this is Catherine Churchill. We're at 9 Chimney Corner Circle, so we are the house right by the bridge on the southern side. And my question is if we could get a little bit more detail as to the estimate for timing for different stages of the project. I understand that the goal is to have it complete by the end of November, but how long is the overall construction and demolition expected to take? I understand you're looking right now for contractors, but I just want to get a better understanding of sort of the full length of the actual construction and demolition process and when you think it might start.
So we're actually going out to bid in the near future, within the next week or so, and we expect to hopefully have a contractor onboard the beginning of September. And then it will be up to them to kind of set schedule as to how they want to approach the project. They may choose to first mobilize to do some of the prep work and dismantle the old bridge, but like I said, the actual bridge itself will likely not be available for installation until the end of October, beginning of November. So that's why I put in a completion date by November 30th. But until we have a contractor onboard, I couldn't give you an exact, you know, approach because means and methods are on the contractor. We'd like to see, you know, but obviously if they go out once to do the dismantling, that means two times mobilizing to the site, so it's going to be kind of their call to make if they want to do it that way, or if they're just going to come out and try and do the project all at once. I don't expect, in terms of the dismantling and then the reinstall, both of those operations should be short duration because it'll probably take them maybe a few days on each end to dismantle and then to install the new bridge. The pier work at the base will likely be done by boat and can be done at any time that they choose. And the prep of the abutments isn't much work either. There's a few anchor bolts that have to be drilled in and epoxied into the abutment. So depending on the approach by the contractor, I don't expect the project to take more than a few weeks in total time of work.
And will we be able to get an update once there is more clarity? So once a contractor's been engaged, will we know more about the timeline?
Sure, I've been keeping Mary Alice Lee, the Satiem's Head Association president, surprised of scheduling of, you know, getting this project moving and all that, and I certainly can share those schedule information with the contractor onboard with her to kind of give the information out to the membership.
Okay, great, thank you.
Are there any other clarifying questions from commissioners or from the audience?
I have a question.
Could you state your name and address? Yes, could you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Jean-Marc Pendroux, and thank to Catherine Churchill for her question. I am the current president of Chimney Corner Park Association, so this is of 11 houses around Chimney Corner, just around the yacht club. And the only question I would add is a bit along with what Catherine Churchill was asking. Do we need to do anything special to help you, or do we need to get any kind of information from you guys when you are intervening on the scene because we might help or whatever? So maybe Janice Plaziac can communicate with us if need be, and you have my email as well, and I am only caring about the 11 houses here, part of the Chimney Corner Association.
Terrific. Janice, obviously if there's anything that they can do to help, if you could help facilitate that, that would be terrific.
Yeah, once we have a contractor onboard, we'll have more information on schedule and all that, and be sure to share it, and the contractor will be responsible for all the work, and cooperation and patience is appreciated, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you.
I see that Mike Song has a question. Mike, if you could again state your name and address for the record, and your question would be appreciated.
Sure, it's Mike Song, 179 Prospect. We're on the other side of the bridge from the Churchills, and we really think it's great that you're going to fix it. I think that's wonderful. And I wanted to say that fixing the abutment, you know, from what I can see on our property is a great thing because I think that those stones are cosmetic, but I feel like they also, when there's a storm, they really do blunt some of that storm from eroding the soil that comes underneath that bridge. And so if you're walking towards the bridge from the south side, there's a big block of granite, it's about to fall off the road there, and you know, you look at it and you go, wow, it would be great if there was anything in between, you know, the ocean and that soil there. So we think it's really wonderful, and we think it's just terrific. We also wanted to offer, if there's ever a need to be on our property as a vantage point or anything, we're very easy, you know, you can tell how to get in touch with us. Do you have our contact information? We're happy to help out. And then I just wanted to ask one question. Are you saying that the bridge itself is going to be of a similar design as it is right now, or is it aesthetically going to change in terms of the arc of the bridge, or is there anything you can let us know about a final design that you have, have or is that in the future?
No, so the bridge is going to be almost a replica of what's out there now. We did locate the original manufacturer of the bridge, and they're still in business. They got bought out by somebody, but fortunately, they're still manufacturing the very same bridge. There's some changes regarding some bracing and things like that for current code and structural requirements, but for the most part, it's going to look like the same bridge. The same camber is going to be included to, you know, with the curve of the bridge, so it should look very similar to what's there now.
Thank you very much. It's a very beautiful bridge, so it's...
Terrific. Are there any other questions or comments from the audience?
One from Cool Dad, if you could formally identify yourself for the record.
Yes, I apologize for that. My kids labeled me as Cool Dad for video conferencing. And my IT abilities don't know how to reverse it, so I'm stuck there. My name is Ted Fisher. Hello, Philip, nice to see you. Hello, Janice.
How are you?
We, the Fisher family own property actually on both sides of the bridge, and I just wanted to offer up that if you guys need some staging areas for equipment or components or materials, you know, we would be happy to provide that in our field, which is on the Mike Song side of the bridge. We have property with a pier and a dock on the other side of the bridge. So if you guys need anything, please let us know. We'd be happy to participate. The Fisher family participated in helping take out the original automotive bridge, as well as we were involved in putting the current bridge in place with the town, so we're happy to help out any way we can.
Great.
Number two, you guys may know that we have a challenge with typically kids who jump off the bridge and then swim around and come up on our property, and I'm not sure if there's anything we can do to sort of state in any, you know, document or something that we would really like the town to enjoy the bridge and enjoy the public access, but that our property for swimming is still, remains private, and our dock is not a spot for people to swim up to and exit the water from. So I don't know what can be done with that, but if anything that could be announced to try and limit that, we would appreciate that as well.
Janice, has there been signage placed on the dock in the past, basically saying this is not a swimming area, it's not, you know, no swimming from the dock?
Well, um...
Or from the pier, I should say.
Yeah, well, the bridge is the, yeah, I'd like to not have them jump off the bridge because I think part of, part of the deterioration of the bridge, I mean, it is almost, it's 40 years old, but part of it may be due to the saltwater kind of, you know, in that certain area, because that's where they jump off of that at most deteriorate. But I, you know, I think it's up to the locals to kind of police it, and I think Ted, it's probably a good idea, maybe you post your property as, you know, private, no trespassing, and then you might have a case to keep them off. We may look into maybe some signage that we might be able to add to, you know, the rails of the bridge. I was thinking maybe some spikes on top, and I don't think that's appropriate. So we'll see what we can do once we get it...
If we could come up with, yeah, just if we could come up with some type of limited signage, I think that's also, you know, would reduce liability on the part of the town as well.
Yeah, we could post something certainly like on the inside rail of the bridge, so you see it when you're on the bridge and not see it from afar.
That might reduce it, I don't think it'll eliminate. You do what you can do, so.
In that, in that letter, in that letter that we didn't read, there was a part in there that stated the concern of the birds that nest and have during their mating season and is not to be done during those, any kind of demolition or work on it is to be done until those birds are done with their nesting. I just want to, I did read that while you couldn't read it, I was able to read it, and that demolition part and repair is to be done when the birds are done nesting and it's over with.
That was part of the...
It was part of the letter that he just summed up.
Yep. So we'll make sure that that's the case. Are there any other, Catherine, did I see you have another question?
Yeah, I just had one final... Yeah, I just had one final comment echoing what Ted Fisher was saying about using the bridge and possible signage. It would be great if we could find a way to prevent motorcycles from driving over it. I do think it should be a pedestrian bridge and there are times when that has happened and I, I don't think it's the safest thing. So I think it would be better if we could prevent motorcycles from going over the bridge.
Yeah, we could look at either side at the entrances if there's anything that we can do there. We don't want to block, obviously pedestrians or, you know, ADA access, but there might be some opportunity to do something on either side once the new bridge is erected to make it difficult. My understanding there might be golf carts that drive across the bridge as well, which I don't think is the thing to do either. So we could take a look at that.
Thank you.
Are there, is there anybody here that is here to speak in support of this application that we already haven't heard from? Would anyone like to speak against this application? With no further questions and no further comments, would someone like to make a motion to close?
So moved.
Thank you very much.
Scott.
Thank you. So I'm going to do a quick roll call vote on closing. Richard Wallace.
Aye.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Jamie Stein.
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea.
Yes.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Bill Freeman. Where's Phil?
Oh, you need to unmute.
Oh, you're muted.
Thank you, Bill.
Sorry.
I will also vote to close, so thank you very much. We will make a decision on this a little bit later in the meeting, but I'm pretty confident that this one will probably move forward. Next item is Calpech Patel, Muyah Burgers, 119 Boston Post Road, Unit 210, Map 79, Lot 35, Zone, Special Permit to Revised Sign Package by Increasing the Size and Allowing An Additional Sign on the Side of the Building. I would note in advance of this that this was already approved by Design Review. So if there's someone here on behalf of Calpech Patel that would like to speak to this, we'd love to hear from you. Yes, hi Chris, if you could state your name and address for the record, that would be great.
Chris, we can't hear you.
Is there a phone number that needs to get turned on? 940.
940, let's see, phone.
Got him. Is that you, Chris?
Yes, ma'am. Hey, how are you? How are you guys doing? My name's Chris Heiser, I'm Director of Construction with Muyah Burgers, Fries &amp; Shakes. I'm located in Dallas, Texas. Speaking on behalf of Calpech, who is away on business in Norway, I do also have on the phone Brian St Pierre, our General Manager of the location, and also Nesh Patel, one of the co-owners. And we are seeking, we're on a corner spot there at Guilford Commons and we sure would like to get our sign size increased to be more proportional with the front facade, along with adding a sign on the side where the parking is to maximize our brand and our business.
Chris, to touch on this, as you can see, this is the end cap unit. This is almost directly across the driveway as you're pulling up into the DDR Plaza. It's across the way from Panera. So if you're standing in front of Panera, you're looking at the back of this building, Building A. And Muyah Burgers is this end unit. Based on the original sign package that was approved as a special permit with your commission, the signs were uniform size across this building. And now however, as they're actually looking at the design of the building, the maximum height of three feet was rather small for the facade. And so the applicants have proposed an increase in the build, excuse me, the height of the letters and also to accommodate this, the side view from here to accommodate a second sign along the corner of the building. As Phil had explained, this has gone to the Design Review Committee for review and to determine consistency with the rest of the plaza and the signage on the site. And their findings were that the increased signage, the size of the sign actually made sense in this corner of the building. And as this was part of a special permit, the process is to return to you for any amendments to that originally approved sign package. The secondary area in the back here, this portion of the sign does comply with the current sign regulations as proposed. The applicant did propose a larger sign in the rear of the building and at this time, the Design Review Committee felt that the two feet was adequate for what's there now. So that's essentially the, this is the proposed and those are the changes. It's a fairly straightforward application here.
Good. So I will put to the commissioners, are there any questions from the commissioners? Yes. No questions from the commissioners? Ah, yes.
Frank.
Is that Frank?
Yep. Are they going to have any signage on the pylons out in front on the street?
The monument signs by the, they are entitled, in the sign package currently, they are entitled to one sign on that ground sign. I have not seen a proposal for that at this time. I would assume that they would have one as most all the tenants in the property are identified through that ground sign. There's one on either side of the entrance, so I would.
Chris, does that make sense with there's a kind of a monument area before you pull in?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And yes, to answer both the questions, yes, we would want to be on the monument sign as well. And I believe that's part of the, part of the lease was my, maybe my understanding, but I don't know if we've done the proper application yet for that, so.
Yeah, actually, that probably wouldn't, as long as it conforms with the sign package regulation that was approved.
Aaron, wasn't that, I was going to say, wouldn't that have been part of the original approval? This is an amendment.
The original sign, the original sign package does allow for the tenants in their lease and gives specifics as far as the size, dimensions of their identification on the ground sign. So as long as we proposes a zoning application for that signage and compliance, they would not need to return to you for review.
Unless it was not compliant, Chris, I think you're good to go on signage on that.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. Any other questions from commissioners?
No, sir.
Sorry. Are there any questions from the audience with respect to the signage change? Would anybody like to speak in favor of this application? Would anyone like to speak against this application? What I would propose, as Chris, as you may or may not know, we have a two-meeting requirement for special permits, which can be waived by a super majority of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm comfortable with this, especially given the fact you've already gone to Design Review. So what I would ask for from one of the commission members is a motion to waive the second public hearing for the special permit.
So moved.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you, the second from Frank. I'll do a quick roll call vote. Richard Wallace.
Yes.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Jamie Stein.
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea.
Yes.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
And I will also vote yes, so we will make a decision on your application tonight and we'll waive the second public hearing. Thank you very much and thank you also for taking the time to go to Design Review and working with them to come up with a plan that works for everybody. That's very helpful. Next item is.
Phillip, I'll motion to close officially.
Okay, thank you very much. Make a, Scott made a motion to close, do we get a second on that?
Second to close.
Okay, all in favor, Richard Wallace.
Aye.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Jamie Stein.
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea.
Yes.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
And I will also vote to close. Thank you, Scott, for keeping us all legal, I appreciate that. Next item is Susannah H. Finning, right, we good?
Yes, sorry.
Susannah H. Finning, 23 Lover's Lane, Map 40, Lot 139B, Zone R3, Special Permit to Add and Attach 830 Square Foot Accessory Apartment. The proposal included a 484 square foot detached two-car garage patio and access path. Is someone here to present on behalf of Susannah?
Russell is here.
H. Finning?
Hello, I'm Russell Canty, CK Architects, 131 Boston Street. And Dan and Susannah are here, but will let me present and will be available for any questions that come up. I think it's a fairly straightforward application. We did work on their home about 10 years ago and since they've had an interest in expanding to allow their mother-in-law from New York City to come up and make longer stays and maybe move in in a more permanent way in the future. But basically for now, it will be utilized for family use only. And it's an 830 square foot apartment that's at the upper level of the home. It's actually kind of an upside down home the way it's set up, so their upper level has their kitchen, living and master suite. And this will actually come off on the eastern side of the house and actually land on a sort of knoll that's on that eastern side between Lover's Lane and the house. And basically it's a one-bedroom apartment. You can see here, so this is oriented such that south, well, so west is down on the page, so you're facing up toward Lover's Lane. The apartment is this middle block that basically sits. It's of a style very similar to the main house, which takes the 70s and then was updated when we did renovations to the house. And then there, as part of this, to service the house, we're also proposing a garage so that that will have two closed parking spaces, some, two parking spaces in front as well as a path that will have a front entry to it. I think we're compliant in every way. We've looked into any, you know, issues with endangered species and it came back with no, nothing, nothing popped up. There's no wetlands in the area and we've already gotten test holes and gotten a design for what improvements need to be made to the septic system to accommodate the additional flows from the additional bedroom.
We have a floor plan over here, there you go.
So, yep, so that's the lower level, which doesn't really change at all. That's the existing house and you're just in an understory. And then the next level up, you can see there's a heated connector that comes across what is now a deck area and then enters into a new apartment. So there's a small mudroom, a kitchen, a dining and living area, and then a bedroom suite. And that flows out onto a patio. There's an existing cottage that sits on the top of the hill that's used to be an artist's studio for a previous owner that has a kind of an interesting chimney. We're going to try to take the building down and keep the chimney as an outdoor fire feature. We'll see, it's listing a little bit, but it's been pretty solid. So that cottage predates. Our new apartment doesn't quite come as far as that, to give you a perspective, we're about 15 feet off of the western side of that cottage with where the new addition is being proposed.
I don't think you can see where it's, oh yeah.
Yeah, there's a small, right there. So that gives you an orientation, but it's pretty setback from the road and in sort of, as I said, in keeping with the style of the original.
This is an accessory apartment, does it, is it compliant with respect to the sizing between accessory apartments and main buildings?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, just figured I'd throw that out as a question, ask and answer, thank you, Russ.
Are the owners going to continue to sell firewood there? It's the best deal in town for.
My photos I submitted did not, tried not to show that, I'm not sure.
Thanks, George.
There's still plenty of room for it and actually the overhang on the back of the garage has more, you know, protected with storage for them to be able to stock that.
You know where they go, George.
Yeah, we're also taking down two big trees, so.
And the detached garage, Russ, is not part of the application technically, it's shown on here so that you're aware of the overall project, but what's under your purview this evening is the accessory apartment specifically.
We do have a letter from Dennis Johnson. Can I read this into the record, Russ? You okay with that? The applicant's proposed accessory, this is from Dennis Johnson, Director of Health, dated August 1st. The applicant's proposed accessory apartment addition will result in an increase in wastewater flow and require the enlargement of septic system. Soil testing conducted on the site revealed suitable soil for expansion of the septic system. Based upon results of the recent soil tests and site plan review, it is recommended that the applicant's proposal, proposed accessory apartment be approved with the following condition. One, the septic system serving house and apartment shall be upgraded prior to the issuance of a final building occupancy approval. That make sense, Russ? We good with that?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Are there any questions from commissioners with respect to this application? I would take it back to Aaron, just questioning, does it make, have you done, gone through the checklist and just made sure to check all the boxes for accessory apartments?
Yes, it does.
Okay, good. Any other questions from commissioners? Are there any questions from the audience with respect to this application? Good. Would anyone like to make a comment in favor or again? Richard, you have a question?
Rich, did you have a question?
No.
Or are you just waving your hand?
I was just waving it, everybody.
It's gonna be a long night.
So it could be a long night. So again, as we did on the last application, I feel like this is one of those situations where we don't need to have a second meeting, so it's like a motion to waive the second public hearing. Anyone? Jamie, will you? Jamie, will you second?
I will.
Or Scott? Thank you, thank you very much. Quick roll call vote. Richard Wallace.
Aye.
Thank you. Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Jamie Stein.
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea.
Yes.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
And I will also vote to waive the second public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you. Does someone like to second that?
Okay.
Thank you, Jamie, good. Richard Wallace.
Yeah.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Yes.
Jamie Stein.
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea.
Yay.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
And I will also vote to close. Thank you, we will act on this item tonight. Good. Next, actually, the next item was supposed to be Mark Knapp, 94 Great Harbor Road, but my understanding is there's a request to continue to 819, is that correct, Aaron?
That is correct and I would anticipate that on next Wednesday's meeting that we will also receive another request to extend this public hearing, to continue it.
Okay, do we need a motion and a vote to continue?
So moved.
Okay, Richard Wallace.
Yes, I'll second that.
Scott, okay, I'll ask for your vote also, yes or no?
Yes.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Jamie Stein.
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea.
Aye.
Aye. Alan Brown.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
And I will also vote to continue this tonight for the probable continuation after that. Next item is Deborah Williams Zimmerman, 1107 West Lake Avenue, Map 95, Lot 42-3, Zone R5, Special Permit for a two-car garage over 750 square feet. Are the Zimmerman's here to tell us about the garage?
Yes.
Or someone here to tell us about the garage for the Zimmerman's?
Yes.
Hey, how are you? If you could state your name and address for the record. If you could take your name and address for the record, that would be great.
Uh, Bill or William Zimmerman, 1107 West Lake Avenue in Guilford. I'm the, uh, one of the property owners with my wife, Deborah Zimmerman. Um, we're, uh, going for a special variance to, uh, put a garage that's over 750 square feet. We got the, uh, ZBA, um, approval for the location and the size. And, uh, we're going for, uh, you know, the, the over 750 square feet. It's a two-bay garage. Uh, there should be some plans to, um, for, uh, two car, two garages and a side storage area with a door on it. Uh, there should be a couple of pictures or draftings of the, uh, drawing. They're not, they're not complete in terms of, uh, the details, but, uh, that's what the garage is going to look like.
I apologize, it's on its side, but you can kind of get it.
Yeah, just turn your head to the side. Yeah. It's got a small roof over the door with a window in it. Uh, there's windows on the left side of the garage and the right side of the garage to let some light in. There's no, there are no windows in the back. It's a hip roof garage, uh, in keeping with what the house looks like. Um, I don't know if Aaron has a photo of the house. It's, um, trying to duplicate what they, with the roofing on the house and the siding and everything else. So it's, uh, it matches.
I don't believe I have a photo.
I thought I'd set some to you guys.
Quick question. The ZBA was for side light, side light?
Excuse me? You're breaking up on me.
I think he's asking if you can reiterate what the ZBA was for.
I'm cutting out.
The ZBA was for, it, it's an interior lot. And, uh, there was no place to put the garage except for here because of the topography. And it's, uh, as you can see, it's, it's near the property line. There, there's noth, no other, um, structures you can see from the house there or from the garage area for that matter. And it's back in the woods all the way.
So it's a, a deep property, uh, there are wetlands.
Yup. If you look at the, uh, if you look at the, um, I've got the, uh, the GIS map is, uh, I think is with the, uh, application. And I included a, uh, the, the assessment parcel map and a, uh, USGS, uh, plot of where approximately the, uh, land, the, the property is. The, uh, the GIS is not very, it, it needs a little tweaking because, uh, it, the property line goes right through the edge of one of the, of the house, too.
Kind of, kind of show you a little bit of, uh,
Yeah.
Topography here.
Yeah.
And see that.
We're up on a hill. Where the arrow is actually is a big rock, uh, mountain that, uh, there's a house on the other side of that. And then if you look at that area where that little point is on the lake, um, there's a, there's another house. My sister-in-law lives down that way, but those are the only two houses in the area. The one at the bo, at the top over there, that house has been gone for probably 10, 12 years. It was demolished. And, uh, the land has been for sale for that long. Uh, there's no way, um, there's, nobody can see the house or the, the garage from anywhere pretty much, except for my sister-in-law's house next to us.
Have we received, uh, notices on all the neighbors having received the?
Yes.
Notice of this?
Yes.
Terrific.
We've got some, um, a memo you'd like.
I don't have that.
I do.
If someone could read that in, that would be terrific.
I got it, Phil.
Okay.
I think when he excavates.
Dated August 3rd, 2020 from Kevin McGee, environmental planner. Recent special permit, Deborah Williams Zimmerman, 1107 Lake Avenue, Guilford, Connecticut, 06437. Assessors map 95 lots 42-3. The applicant is proposing to install a 24 by 36-foot garage for storage of a car and a camper just outside of the 100-foot inland wetlands commission's regulatory review area. In order to make sure that the wetlands are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. One, soil and erosion control measures and orange construction fencing shall be installed prior to the inland wetland commission's regulate, regulated aided review area to protect the adjacent wetlands from siltation. Two, the zone, the town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer shall be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures and orange construction fencing prior to site construction. Soil stockpiles shall be located outside of the inland wetlands commission review area and be contained by soap fencing and/or hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Three, the limits of the wetland, inland wetlands regulated area should be staked out by the engineer prior to the site construction. Four, no construction material shall be deposited within the inland wetlands commission's regulated area without their approvals.
Bill, are you okay with those?
Yes, uh, a couple of, can you go back to the, uh, that letter from Kevin McGee? Thank you. Um, the inland wetlands limits are staked out already. Um, if you, uh, the stockpiles, yeah, they, they will be, they, they'll, they'll be uphill anyway. Probably in the, inside the foundation area where the garage is. Um, let me think here. Uh, yeah, do they, do I need to do orange and orange construction fence with the soil fence, the silt fence? Is that what he's saying in there?
That's the recommendation. Um, and I think that's more to act as a physical, uh, awareness of where that boundary line is for contractors and equipment.
Yeah, it's staked out right now.
Yeah, oftentimes silt fence can, you know, as it's black and kind of blends in with the backdrop. It can, it can be overlooked or knocked over by machines. So the orange construction fence helps us, uh,
Yeah.
as a visual, uh, marker.
Yeah, the, if you, if you look on the plan, there's actually, um, towards the wetlands from the garage, there's, uh, some, there's like a wall that it drops off there. And it's not wetlands area or buffer area, the inside, outside that wall, but it's close. So there won't be anything going past that wall, but I will, I will put silt fence up. The big question is, on the plan, it does show silt fence from property line to property line. Do I need to put silt fence along the property line towards the west?
Yeah, I, I can go over prior to construction. I'm happy to meet you on site to help you through where it should go.
Yeah, okay.
I think that would be fine. We can handle that on a staff level, uh, and, and go through that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
There's one, there's one other quick memo from Dennis Johnson, our Director of Health, dated August 1st. The applicant's proposed two-car garage will not conflict with the location or operation of the septic system. Currently existing on site is recommended that the applicant's special permit be approved.
Yeah, we specifically stayed away from the reserve area of the septic system, too.
Great. Um, are there any questions from app, from commissioners? Are there any questions from the audience with respect to this application? Would anyone like to speak either in favor or against this application?
Not sure who these other calls are, so I'm just going to unmute real quick to make sure that the phone is. Any, any of these phones, um, individuals are looking to speak on behalf of his amendment application?
No?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I think this checks all of our boxes and it's, in my opinion, not required to have a second, um, special, uh, special public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion to waive the second public hearing?
Make a motion.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Richard Wallace?
Yes.
Scott Edman?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
Alan Brown? Bill Freeman?
Yes.
And I would also vote to waive the second special public, special permit, public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion to close?
So moved.
All in favor, Richard Wallace?
Aye.
Thank you. Scott Edman?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
And I will also, very good. Uh, we will, we will make a decision on this this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, next item on our agenda is 258-260 River Street, 258 River Street, map 46, lot 48, zone PVR3 coastal area management site plan for modification of original approval for salt spa, including facade changes, parking lot and stone wall. Is someone here to address the issues for 258-260 River Street LLC?
Yes.
Aaron, do we know who's speaking?
Mark Young and Dirk.
I recognize you guys.
And, uh, Kevin Cleary is the property owner. They're all here representing.
Terrific.
Okay, um, I'm Mark Young. I'm a landscape with Waldo Associates. We were asked to, um, assist, uh, Mr. Cleary in, uh, preparing some, uh, a site plan showing some revisions to the original plan. Uh, the original plan was approved earlier this year. During the course of construction, a few minor, uh, changes were made. And, uh, uh, Aaron asked us, asked the owner to, uh, prepare a site plan showing those revisions. Also, starting from the, from the beginning, um, the first thing we would, we noticed is the roof over the entryway, um, is a flat pitch. That was constructed as a, at a flat pitch, somewhat matching the flat roof of that portion of the building. The original plan had a, a steep peak roof, which, uh, the owner felt was inappropriate. So he made that change. And, uh, we've, we have, uh, so that's part of this application. Originally, in the front of the building, along the street, there was a, uh, a, a, an old, uh, fence kind of gone over with, with a hedge. The owner has decided to replace that hedge with a, uh, stone masonry wall. He got started, uh, and, uh, our original plan has shown the wall actually extended slightly over the street line, that is, the front property line. The town engineer, Janis Plasziak, has requested that we relocate that wall. So the, uh, the wall and footing are entirely on the private property. Uh, so that's, uh, the, the current plan shows that relocation of the wall. And, uh, there's a detail in the lower right, uh, again, indicating that the footing, the outside edge of the footing is on the street line. Now, earlier this evening, uh, in meeting with the design review committee, they felt, and we agree, that rather than have a portion of stone wall to the south, that is, the left side, uh, on the plan, we would, we would, uh, replace that with a continuation of the existing hedge. So that the hedge would, which actually extends a couple hundred feet up the road. So we'll have the hedge extend to the edge of the entry drive. And we'll put an additional short piece of hedge on the other side of the drive to, to close up the front, uh, with the stone wall there. Uh, it was felt that, uh, you know, the hedge would sort of soften the appearance a little bit. And it's also, uh, to pay, it was a little more economical for the owner. So that's one change from this plan that the design review committee, uh, recommended. And, uh, we agree with that. This afternoon, that's right. Uh, there's a bay window, uh, on the south side of the building. It's actually adjacent to, uh, the ramp, the, uh, and the, uh, handicap parking there. We show it on this plan. It wasn't shown on the original plan. Um, there was a window there. Uh, the owner has decided that a, a bay window would, uh, be, be more desirable, uh, with his interior layout. Uh, the original site plan showed the, uh, accessible parking space on the opposite side of the, uh, parking lot there. That would have required, uh, a significant fill placement to, to, uh, to produce a, uh, the appropriate slope up to the entry. And the accessible route from the parking space to the entry would have been directly across the parking lot. We, we felt that was undesirable. And it would have been inconvenient, you know, uncomfortable entry for all the other motorists because there'd be a big hump across the entryway. So we have relocated that, uh, the accessible parking space to, uh, a spot adjacent to the building. This is a, a van accessible space. There is a sidewalk, concrete walk, uh, on two sides. And that transitions into a ramp, uh, which goes up to the, uh, entryway. The ramp will be of pressure-treated wood construction on concrete tiers. And it's, it's set at a 112 pitch, uh, as, as appropriate for an accessible route. Now, the, the ramp actually flattens out a few feet before the entry platform, which will provide a landing for the wheelchair user. And there will be a button, uh, at that point, which will operate the, uh, automatic doors. Which will, will open outward, uh, and then the, uh, wheelchair user can proceed in. And now, uh, our original, uh, submission had a, uh, some fairly extensive work in the front of the building. There was a side staircase off of the, uh, entryway. And that's extensive landscaping. We simplified that, uh, again, working with the design review committee. We have eliminated that side staircase. There will be a railing across that side of the, uh, entry landing. And, uh, the, the path, the stone dust path across the front will simply go from the edge of the parking lot there over to the other doorway. There is a, uh, another door in the front of the building, uh, right, right there, which will be, uh, maintained, uh, primarily for emergency access. Uh, the main entry to the building, of course, will be in the southeast corner. And also the, uh, the, the, the path across the front will connect with a path, uh, from, that, that goes to the, uh, the main entry to the right-hand portion of the building. The occupants of that, uh, portion mostly use the rear entrance. But, um, that, uh, that path will be there. Uh, there will be a break in the stone wall so that, uh, uh, anyone can, uh, enter from, from the street, uh, and, uh, walk up to that doorway. In, in connection with the, um, uh, accessible parking, we've had to do, uh, a little bit of grading in, uh, over there in that portion of the parking lot. We'll be raising the grade about a, a foot or, or, or a little more, um, in order to, uh, provide, uh, the, uh, the, the, the minimum slope, uh, across the parking lot, uh, which is required for the, for the accessible space. That, that fill will be, uh, graded off. Uh, that, that fill will be, uh, graded off, uh, to the back of the original, uh, parking lot. We'll actually be extending the parking a couple of feet in order to provide, uh, the, the, the twenty-foot, uh, depth, um, of parking spaces with the appropriate twenty-four-foot aisle there. The existing, uh, the park, uh, existing parking area is, it's a bit narrow. So we'll, we'll just be extending the parking, uh, and, and regrading, uh, a little bit. And this, again, the, the grading is, is a maximum of about a foot. Uh, and, and the, the, that parking will remain gravel surface. Uh, only the, uh, accessible parking space, uh, will be paved. Okay, um, and let's say I've discussed the, 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 the front area. We've simplified the, uh, landscape. We're gonna, we just have two, uh, two ornamental trees, a, uh, cornish tosa, uh, uh, Japanese, uh, Japanese dogwood and a, uh, Hanvan cherry, uh, there. Okay, those are, uh, we, we tried to space them, you know, kind of away, away from the building a bit, uh, but so that there's room for them to grow. But, uh, we didn't want to block the sign, of course, so, uh, we think those will, uh, you know, enhance the front of the building. Uh, okay, um, we have, uh, spent quite a bit of time, uh, working on a lighting plan. Uh, we've got, uh, let's see, I believe we have, uh, five, uh, wall lights. Uh, again, we, we're working with the designer review committee on the lighting. So, uh, we have, uh,
What's that?
Uh, we have four, we were okay, four lights on the sign. We have, let's see, one. Five, what do we have? Long, I guess it's four, four wall lights.
Yeah, we have one wall.
Right, right. We have one at the southwest corner, one halfway across in the middle of the accessible parking space. One a little ways down from the, uh, the kind of diagonal corner there. And one, another one over, uh, the, near this, the, uh, the kind of the center doorway there. Um, those are, uh, full cutoff, uh, type of floodlights. Um, again, uh, working, right, these. We, working with the design review committee, uh, we were looking at the, uh, lighting around the front door. Uh, the original proposal was a couple of wall sconces, one on each side, right, those, one on each side of the front door. Uh, it, we, we determined that rather than have those, it would be, uh, would make a more attractive entry to have two smaller sconces mounted on basically the, 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 the fascia of the flat roof. It's, uh, difficult to describe. Um, our, 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 our designer, um, drew the, uh, drew some elevations, but it, there wasn't enough detail, but basically the, there's a, uh, three-foot overhang with the existing roof all around. And the front entry has an, a, another roof, which is several feet above that. Uh, so the, uh, the two sconces will be basically on the, the, uh, that short diagonal piece of the roof overhang. They'll have, uh, their main, uh, main light will be directly onto the entry platform with a subdued light pointing upward onto the, uh, the existing, the, the, the over, over roof, so to speak, which will be, uh, which is higher than the flat, existing flat roof of the building and extends, uh, you know, to, to, uh, to cover the entry platform. Um, so there'll be kind of a soft glow on the roof as you walk up to the front door with plenty of big illumination, uh, on the ground. Um, so that's, uh, one, uh, one more change we made, uh, in question with the designer view committee.
So Mark, that's not reflected in this photometric plan?
It is not.
Okay.
It is not, but it, but again, uh,
But it would show up very well anyway, for this other.
Right, it, the, it's, the, 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 the light level is fairly low, so it would make the minimal, uh, difference on that. Uh, but, um, we did eliminate one wall sconce, which is kind of on the, uh, uh, kind of the, as you look at that diagonal corner on the right side of that, yeah, there. Um, we, we eliminated that one. Uh, it was felt that, uh, with the lighting on the sign and the, the door, the front door lighting and the other, the other sconce, that, uh, that one was really supportive. Uh, so that's fine. Okay, so that's, um, that's all the, uh, the changes to the site plan. Um, let's see, uh, for, we're, we're applying as for coastal area management approval because, uh, the, uh, the, uh, grading in the parking lot is less than a hundred feet from the, uh, from the critical coastal resource. Uh, the, the nearest point is about, uh, eighty feet or so on the critical coastal resource, which is the salt marsh, uh, out in the back adjacent to the West River. Uh, we have a, uh, comment from Brian Goenbuski at DEEP, uh, stating no comment, uh, on his cam review. The, uh, NDDB, uh, inquiry, uh, resulted in a no conflict letter. Um, we had some comments from the deputy fire marshal and building official, uh, regarding the, uh, ramp, uh, and, and the front doorway. And we've made some changes, but, which, which did address those comments. Uh, and as I mentioned, uh, we worked out, uh, several details with the designer view committee. Um, and, uh, they, they recommended the changes in the, uh, the hedge and the wall in front and, uh, the lighting, uh, schedule. Um, and, uh, we think their, uh, their suggestions were, uh, um, were, were, were thoughtful and helpful and, uh, we, we would, uh, embrace those changes.
And they did make a possible.
Right, and, and their, 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 their recommendation was positive, uh, with the addition of those changes.
We actually have two letters. Um, one is from Dennis Johnson, which is quick, I'll just get that one out of the way. Um, dated August tenth, the applicant's proposed coastal area management plans and site plan man, modifications will not affect location or operation of the previously approved septic system design, like Dennis. And we have another quick one from Kevin McGee, environmental planner. It's not as quick as the last one. The applicant is proposing site plan modifications which include relocation of the handicap parking, a small expansion of the parking lot, installation of a pave, paver walkway and construction of a block wall. The applicant has completed the checklist, low impact development best management practices. The site plans for the project has sedimentation and erosion control procedures that are in compliance with two seven three dash nine seven B subsections of the zoning regulations. In order to make sure the natural resources are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. One, the town of Guilford zoning enforcement officers shall be notified to inspect sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to any site work. Soil stockpiles should be contained by silt fencing or hay bales. Ero, soil erosion and sedimentation measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of zoning enforcement. Two, the roof water infiltration system will prove that the November sixth, two thousand nineteen planning and zoning commission meeting shall be installed. The engineering department should be contacted to conduct inspection of the infiltration system. Are you a fan of this, Mark?
Yes, yes, that's right. I, I believe the, uh, some water infiltration has been installed.
I, I inspected it. That is installed.
Okay. Okay, terrific. Thank you. So we would not need those conditions. That's terrific. Um, so the, does the cam also relate to the slight increase in size to the parking area? The expansion, um, upriver is two feet, I think you said, to increase.
Yeah, but the, uh, it's, the, uh, expansion of the parking and regrading of the, uh, of the parking required for the accessible, uh, parking space, uh, trigger the, uh, the, the cam, uh, review because some of that concreting is within the hundred-foot, uh, cams on.
Okay, um, so I will throw it out. Are there any questions from commissioners? It's kind of a, I think the checklist of changes, but, uh, thank you for coming before us. But questions from commissioners with respect to either the cam or the site plan changes? No? Um, are there any questions from the audience with respect to the site plan or the cam application that's before us? Uh, would anyone like to speak in favor of this application or would anyone like to speak against it? With neither objection nor support, except for the applicant, uh, and from us, um, would someone like to make motion to close?
Moved.
Okay, Richard. Thank you very much. Two quick call vote. Richard Wallace?
Yes.
Thank you. Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Aye.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Phil Freeman?
Yes.
And I will also move to close. I need to get my earpiece on. God, feels old when you do that. Good. Uh, with that said, why don't we move to deliberation of public hearing events? Right? All right, give her some paperwork here.
So I'll make a motion. Uh, voted that the planning and zoning commission approve a coastal area management application for the town of Guilford for Noble Bridge Colonial Road, as shown on the application dated June twentieth, twenty twenty, prepared by Janus Plaziac, town engineer. This application is approved based upon the finding that it conforms with the zoning code and is consistent with the coastal management policies of the state of Connecticut. I don't believe that there were any stipulations to be added on this.
I think one of, I think the only condition that I remember, um, was the, well, it had to do with the birds and making sure that, um, the bridge was not removed until the purple martin season, um, had been concluded.
So I had the stipulation.
Is that correct?
Based on recommendations of the wildlife.
Terrific. Uh, discussion? I mean, I, I think it's, I think it's a great project. Um, I think I do, I do have empathy to people trying to like ride their motorcycles and golf carts across it and trying to find ways to control that for pedestrian safety. Um, but I think that's something we can work on down the road and, and hopefully get local law enforcement to help us with a little of that as well.
And Mr., Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, this is Matt Hoy for Selectmen. Uh, the, this application is, uh, for you because we have an agreement with the State of the Set Association to split the cost on this project. Uh, there's a historical precedent, uh, that dates back, uh, forty or fifty years relative to the shared responsibility for the, uh, the maintenance and construction of this pedestrian bridge. So, uh, I just wanted you guys to know that, uh, State of the Set Association is, uh, sharing the cost of the reconstruction of this bridge.
Thank you, Mr. Hoy. Um, so we have a motion. Did we get a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. So we've had motion, we have discussion. I'll call vote. All in favor, uh, hold on a second, roll call vote. Richard Wallace?
Aye.
Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Thank you. Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, Alan. Bill Freeman?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes to approve the bridge. Very good. Enjoy the bridge. Have fun. Be safe. Don't let kids jump from that anymore. Okay, we have another motion.
Muyah Burgers.
For a second then. Yes.
Uh, I have a motion voted that the Guil, uh, Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a special permit to revise the sign package at nineteen nineteen Boston Post Road, unit, uh, two ten, map seventy-nine, lot thirty-five for Muyah Burgers, uh, to allow an additional sign on the side of the building as shown on. Aaron? Do you remember the? Yeah.
Sure.
Plan is presented by Aaron Mannix, my Aaron Mannix at our meeting.
Yeah, I guess it was presented at the meeting.
I don't think there's a date. It, it's, it's shown on, uh, illustrations, but the actual sign package itself is amended. Uh, so I think that, that should cover as opposed to a date of, um, this particular, uh, sign proposal. I think, I think.
This application is approved based upon the finding that it conforms with the zoning code. The special permit, uh, revision is effective August fourteenth, twenty twenty, upon filing with town clerk.
Great. Um, we have a motion. Someone like a second, Pat?
I'll make a second.
Thank you very much. Again, you know,
I think it'll be August fourteenth. It'll be, uh, the, the following Friday, right?
Next Friday.
And it's twenty-first.
We can't get it on fourteenth, I don't think, Lisa.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Yeah.
I, I, I think this is a great example of an applicant working with design review to, to meet everybody's needs, and I wanted to thank them for doing everything the right way. And, uh, with that said, we have a motion, um, propose motion in a second. I'll call the vote. Richard Wallace?
Aye, yes, yes.
Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
Alan Brown?
That's for the Dallas guy.
Alan Brown. Bill Freeman, how about you, you know?
Yes, yes. Yes.
Thank you. And I also will approve and will patronize Muyah Burgers when they open. All right.
Thank you, Brian. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Not even that late. Uh, Susanna H. Vining, this is the accessory apartment and the detached two-car garage patio access by Russ Campaign.
Just the accessory.
Someone like to make a motion? Okay, just the accessory apartment.
Oh.
You guys have it or you want to get it?
We got, uh, voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a special permit application for Susanna Vining at twenty-three Lovers Lane, map forty, lot thirty, one thirty-nine B for an accessory apartment as shown on Vining Edition, ten sheets dated June twenty-second, twenty twenty, prepared by C K Architects and Anderson Engineering and Surveying Association, Associates. Um, this application is approved based upon the finding that it conforms with the zoning code. Special permit is effective on August fourteenth, twenty, uh, twenty-first, twenty twenty, upon filing with town clerk. Uh, I don't remember there be stipulations on this one either.
No. Uh, the septic system, uh, shall be expanded prior to, uh,
Right, this, the, the septic system must be made compliant prior to any issuance. Um, so we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you very much. Uh, discussion, I mean, I think it's, again, pretty straightforward. You know, it, it's always easy when they check all the boxes, so, uh, I'll call the vote. Richard Wallace?
Yes.
Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Phil Freeman?
Yes.
And I will also vote to approve. Should be a fun project to watch. All right. Uh, Zimmerman's, I believe, are the next up. Who wants, Jamie, you want, you got the motion?
Sure, happy to. Uh, voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a special permit application for a two-car garage over seven hundred and fifty square feet for Deborah and William Zimmerman, uh, eleven oh seven Westlake Avenue, map ninety-five, lot forty-two dash three, as shown on Zimmerman Garage, four sheets dated five four, two thousand eighteen, prepared by David Connell, designer and land of Deborah and William Zimmerman zoning location survey dated six five, twenty twenty, prepared by B L Companies. This application is approved with the following condition. Uh, this application is approved based upon a finding that with the variance granted, it conforms with the zoning code. The special permit is effective on August fourteenth, twenty twenty, and upon filing with the town clerk.
I'll just amend that, that it would be August twenty-first.
Okay.
I think Kevin had two stipulations on this one.
Correct.
Well, Aaron, could you just read in those two stipulations so we have it for the record?
Yes.
Thank you.
There were four actually.
Okay.
Sorry, shifting my things here.
I have them ready.
Yep. ENS controls be installed at the 100-foot Upland Review Line, including orange construction fence, and that the limits of the regulated area be staked out by an engineer, and no material shall be deposited within the Upland Review Area.
Terrific.
Second.
We have a motion. Thank you. Discussion? And I mean, again, I think the biggest hurdle for these guys was getting through ZBA, which I thought was great. Glad they were able to get that done and looks like a good project. Any questions or concerns from the commission? You know, with no concerns expressed, I'll call the vote. Richard Wallace?
Yes.
Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yay.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. Have fun building your accessory apartment or their garage. Good time.
Thank you.
258 260 River Street LLC. This is the CAM and Site Plan Modification. And there is a proposed motion. How about Scott?
Voted Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve revisions to the site plan and coastal area management plans for 258 through 60 River Street, Map 46, Lot 48, as shown on the application dated June 23rd, 2020, and zoning location survey dash properties of Kevin Cleary, 260 River Street, prepared by Waldo Associates, dated June 5th, 2020, and architectural plans that were submitted, and I don't have the name of. This application is approved with the following conditions. That might have changed. The first one says that the entry point to be bracketed on both sides by the landscape wall and on the south side, the hedge be extended to the wall based on the property lines. It's a little confusing.
On either side of the driveway.
Okay. At the, two, at the main entry, the north stair shown on the plan be removed. It connects to the stone dust pathway that passes, thereby adjusted to the main entry. Three, prior to construction, the committee needs to review the full material color selection palette and lighting plan, which we did. And four, the two trees should be moved into the body of the landscape plan close to the street, which it seemed like it was. This application is approved based on the finding that it conforms with the zoning code and is consistent with the coastal management policies of the state of Connecticut.
Is the committee, the design review committee, or us?
Okay, hold.
Yeah, I think, I think what you should say is the plan should be revised in accordance with the recommendations of the design review committee at their meeting on today's date, the August 12th, whatever today's date is, 12th.
So that we have a on file, like a, basically.
That'll cover. Yeah.
So my question, my question goes to number three. Prior to, prior to construction, the committee needs to review. Is that design review committee?
The committee.
Yeah, you can delete that. No, you can delete that condition. That's what they did today. And substitute.
In addition to those conditions, I have more that should be incorporated into the resolution. Number one is that the front property line shall be staked prior to the installation of the stone wall to ensure compliance that this is on the applicant's property and not within the town right of way. And number two, prior to issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance or CO, a final A2 survey shall be submitted to confirm that the stone wall was constructed on the, on the property of 260 River Street. We touched on the landscape hedge on the property and along the entrance driveway that also shall be on the town property, or on the applicant's property. And the last one would be that the updated lighting fixture details that you discussed today with the design review committee shall be submitted prior to amending that building permit.
Oh, added.
And then Kevin McGee had two conditions as well. One was ENS controls and one was just to ensure that the stormwater infiltration was installed as well. So we should incorporate that. That's it.
Incorporated. And you, thank you. And any concerns?
This is Jamie. Did, did this project have a different architect of record before?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, because I, I think I remember getting a, a letter to my house for, I guess, just saying that he was no longer the architect of record, and I couldn't remember.
That is correct. That was Duo Dickinson is no longer on, on the project, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
It happens. So I'll, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the CAM and Site Plan Revisions, Richard Wallace?
Yes.
Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
And I will also vote in favor of this. Thank you very much. Enjoy your construction. Good. Aaron, did you mention to me that Pat, was it Patagansett Holdings LLC is going to be tabled?
Patagansett pending approval by the Board of Selectmen of the Conservation Easement. And to tidy up that paperwork prior to commission's approval, we would ask that you entertain a motion to table this to next week.
Was it 8/19?
Yes.
Would you like to make a motion to table to the 8/19 meeting?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Richard Wallace?
Yes.
Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Aye.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. I'm happy to have that one moved because it was going to be a lot in that one. Greg Monroe, 111, Whitfield, Map 32, Lot 102, Zone R1, request zone boundary change, set public hearing date for 8/19. Somebody make a motion for that?
That, that is set already. That's just a placeholder, so you're aware.
Okay, same thing with Trolley Barn Crossing?
No, these new applications are, are, are received, but you should set the public hearings.
Okay, so I'm just going to go through all of these and read them through, and then we can just do a single vote on them. Trolley Barn Crossing LLC, 129 Water Street, Map 32, Lot 17R. I can't do that? Or I can?
There's the, the third one we're out to discuss apparently.
Right.
If you'd like to know what it is, that's your move, that you're acting on.
You mean it? All right. Well, let's just do the first two, and then we'll get to the third. Trolley Barn Crossing, 129 Water Street, and Map 32, Lot 17, Zone R3, special permit coastal area management for change of one non-conforming use retail to another non-conforming use office, set public hearing day for 8/19/20. Michael Marianus, 595 Mulberry Point Road, Map 16, Lot 48, Zone R5, coastal area management for installation of at grade wood patio, set public hearing day for 9/2. And now we are at Town of Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission, zoning amendment to Section 273-75Q1 to extend temporary outdoor dining certificates issued under Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7MM through December 31, discuss and set public hearing date for 9/2. Do we want to do anything on that right now, Aaron?
Yes, so this was, this is an effort that we are making to support our local businesses, our local restaurants who are currently having outdoor dining in light of the COVID situation. The governor had executive orders which allowed, you know, which, well mandated, reduce capacity indoor for restaurants, however, but did extend really some outdoor dining availabilities in parking lots and, and some lax regulations. Where typically outdoor dining had to go before the commission for approvals. This was able to be handled administratively through me as the zoning enforcement officer. And in, in anticipation that the governor's emergency orders will be expiring, I believe on September 8th, I'm anticipating that there will be some additional orders, you know, forthcoming. Should there be any lax, we wanted to at least protect the ability to have these outdoor dining setups continue through the fall season, through the, the end of the year, provided that the indoor capacities are not being able to be met during this time. So it basically is a language that allows them to continue through the end of December. That is, I, I do have a typo in my document here. It should be through December 31st. I think on the agenda it's correct. And, and, and in no way will that enable any sort of non-conforming situation for these restaurants. It, it just allows the extension to go through the end of the year.
And we'll talk about that on the second.
That's correct. And another additional one will be, oh, excuse me, that will be coming as well would, along these lines would be for an extension of the outdoor retail uses. So outdoor activities were sort of bundled under this 7MM executive order to allow for expanded outdoor retail and restaurants. We have not had any outdoor retail temporary permits as of yet, but I do have one coming through now. And so we're going to change that language a little bit to allow for outdoor retail temporarily and to also allow that to be extended through the end of the year.
Mr. Chairman, this is Matt Hoy. At the appropriate time, I'd be happy to support Aaron's position on this in support of our merchants in town. So at the appropriate point, I'd be happy to comment.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Hoy. Next time, please take your address for the record.
32 Sevier Terrace or occasionally 31 Park Street.
Occasionally.
Seems like it's more 31 Park Street.
Great. We have one final item on our regular meeting, and that is WB Bishop and Son, 1355 Boston Post Road, Map 52, Lot 7, Zone PV2, Site Plan Modification to include expanded use of onsite sale and consumption of wine and hard cider in Little Red Barn. Receive and request action. So we will receive. I assume that Mr. Bishop is here. Did this tell us what he would like to do? Encourage us to support him.
This process. Give you the, if you're muted, let me unmute you. There you go.
Good.
Thank you. Good evening all. The legislature just passed additional liquor changes this past year, effective July 1st. One of them is a addition of a craft cafe permit that allows farm wineries in particular to that permit to be able to take and sell Connecticut craft beers on site for consumption as well as the wines that we already sell by the glass and by the bottle that we produce and are produced by other Connecticut farm wineries. So our request is to get that permit. I worked through the details and complications with Aaron. Part of our application here is showing where on site we're actually adding two areas that we will be doing that seasonally. One is around our Little Red Barn area, and the other is adjacent to the greenhouse area that is in the front of the building. And again, depending upon the nature of the seasonal aspects, you know, which is available based upon potential volume and what we do is going to be defined by that seasonality. So we need to sign off by zoning in order to approve, to get this new liquor permit, and that's why we're coming in front of you, because we need that sign off, and Aaron felt it was a little bit more involved than what we're already doing. So therefore, we've got this plan in front of you. On the top of the page there, the red outlines, the last time we were in front of you was last May, and we added the ice cream patio on the bottom side right there, and that is currently being done for ice cream sales, and people bringing food out that they may purchase in the market to have on the terrace. And in the middle of the building is where the greenhouse area is currently, greenhouse takes up about a half of that area. And then the other half is for outdoor plant display at the current time. That would turn into tables with umbrellas where the plants are, potentially tables inside the greenhouse if we're not doing plants at that time of the year. And the biggest change in where the use of space would be up around the Little Red Barn area. And the second page there, she scrolls down, shows the existing barn and pavers are located around the entire front. The side where the two red rectangles are all on top of pavers. And the red rectangles are to represent tents that we have up there seasonally. That isn't the exact size of the tents that we have used before. We've had either two or three tents. Currently, there is, well, there was no tent until I think Tuesday of this week. I've got a video of the two tents being uprooted despite there being well fastened down and way flipping across the field. So we're going to have to be replacing those once the insurance company gets approved here. But this is for the future, and the tables are shown closer together than what COVID would allow. But we're looking forward to COVID not being around for a long time for next year and the year ahead. So this is representative of having tables that would be either under the tent or tables with umbrellas instead of the tents were not there in that particular configuration. We have used temporary restrooms in that area in the past, and there's shown two in the general area where we have had them in the past, and we've got a stockade fence that screens it back off the main area that people are moving around and congregating at. Nuts and the bolts. I put together a narrative. I'm not sure if that got emailed out to you, them, Aaron, or not. But basically, half of that was the statute, what the statute allows and the change of the regulation for the crafts cafe permit. Another couple lines on what we're currently allowed to do with the farm winery permit that we have. And then basically what I just outlined verbally and going through the that I, Aaron showed.
Right. I think, I don't have the narrative to share on the screen, Keith, but I think just to summarize that the craft beer license is a little different than, the craft cafe license is a little different than a cafe license that a restaurant would have in which you're not required to serve food. And, and there is no requirement for an enclosure of the area for the tables to separate that from other areas on the property. The sale of alcohol by the glass is per the standard state guidelines and their timeframes, which could be actually later than the hours of operation of the store. Just so you are aware, and that could be up to 10:00 PM, I believe. Is that correct? Yeah.
Yes, yeah. Farm wineries are limited to 10:00 PM as opposed to restaurants, which are later than that, and that 10:00 PM is seven days a week at 10:00 PM.
Right. And currently, the ice cream window is open after hours as well, so this wouldn't be the only use on the property that is open later. And lastly, there is an opportunity on the liquor license to request live entertainment on the properties. At this point, that, that request is not included in this application. We did determine on a staff level that that would be appropriately done as a special permit to keep in harmony with how, how outdoor live entertainment is handled for restaurants that fall. for restaurants that fall within 100 feet of a residential property. And be it the actual site of the Little Red Barn may be outside of 100 feet of a residential property. The, the lot itself is quite large of 53 acres, I think you said, Keith, and, and definitely has some abutters on Long Hill and across on Boston Post Road and Pedlows. So that will be a forthcoming application that Keith is working on. But for the time being, this is more of an expansion of a use.
Terrific.
Yeah, I would expect we'll be back next week for your reading next week with that special permit application. So you put it on the agenda for public hearings, et cetera, to get that going ahead. And that entertainment factor that we're figuring is going to be pretty light. I'm sure if you remember who's there is approved the application for entertainment on restaurants, but there's a checklist that the Liquor Commission has of all, you know, like eight different types. You've got, you know, musicians, comedians, acoustics, concerts, you know, five bands.
Karaoke.
Karaoke, right. So, you know, not that I'm going to do karaoke, but, you know, if you rotate through when, you know, you know, once a week you have something and you're on a rotating basis, then, you know, they could be asking Erin to come over for karaoke and.
Yeah. I would, I just have you check with Erin because there are some posting requirements for special permits. I'm not, I'm pretty sure we couldn't get it for reading next week if we're going to be looking at a special permit.
Yeah, a receipt to set the public hearing for September, I think is how we're going to do it. Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Sure. Any, any questions from commissioners? I mean, I'm looking forward to it. Now, would someone like to make the motion?
Do we have a motion?
I have a motion in front of me. Voted Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a site plan modification to allow onsite sale and consumption of wine and hard cider and pre-prepared food as shown on application and drawings dated 8/11/2020. The application is approved with the following conditions. There aren't any that I'm aware of. This application is approved based upon the condition that it conforms with the zoning code. Someone like to second that? Anyone? Thank you. Any, any discussion, any concerns? I mean, I think it's great. I think it adds to the community, adds the flavor. The, the music thing, I think we'll, we'll address that when it comes up, but.
Bill, I did forget. We did have a memo from Dennis. I know it's not a public hearing, but he said that, you know, the, the. And sanitary facilities are, there are no conflicts, and they're within adequate distance from, from the seating area. So he has no issues.
My only, my only question had been whether there was control of, of the area where people would be drinking, but Erin already answered that with the.
Right.
Part of the permit. I think Frank.
Hi, Jamie.
Hey, I just, I just.
Do you have a comment?
Did you say that it could be open until 10:00 PM?
That's correct.
So that, I, I realize that this isn't a public hearing, but that doesn't require some type of announcement to the abutting properties or anything like that?
So typically not for an hour of operation. Like I said, it's not a live entertainment. And the level of, I mean, retail stores could, you know, potentially their retail store could be open that late if they really.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
You know, I mean, I don't think there are limitations on the hours of, of your farm store, Keith, are there? I mean, as.
No, not that we're, I mean, we're in a commercial zoning district and, you know, just like the shopping plaza down and, you know, where Big Y and those guys are, they could be open 24/7 if they wanted.
Oh, right.
Yeah, it is, it is a post-road village district. I'm sorry, I didn't, it's not a residential zone. It just abuts some residential zones.
Thank you.
We're planning on being open anything beyond what hours we're currently doing, as it is.
Okay. Someone like to second the motion?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. I'll call the vote. Rich Wallace?
Yes.
Thank you. Scott Edman?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
I will vote yes, and, and at some point, maybe we can have a meeting there. That'd be great.
We could have my Zoom portion of it sitting there.
It doesn't seem quite fair.
Each have your own table and sit at your different table for your little meeting.
That's right.
Let's see, with no.
Thanks, Keith.
No, thank you very much, commissioners. Appreciate it.
No one would even, no one would even know we're sitting on cider.
I think we have a couple rounds of minutes for approval. Phil, that's next up.
Do we have minutes to approve?
7:15.
I don't seem to have the.
I don't have any.
Okay. I have reviewed the minutes for 7:15 and 8:05, especially the 8:05 minutes, which were.
Our best meeting, yeah.
Substantially correct. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Some moved.
Do I get a yes on that? Thank you.
Yes.
Second, anyone? You have the first and the second. If someone else take the second? Thank you. That'd be great. Richard Wallace?
Yes.
Scott Edman?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
I'm going abstain.
Oh, you're killing me, Frank. You know why? I was sitting there, we'd have had a universal night. I'll go with the abstain. That's fine.
I, I wasn't on the, the meeting on the 5th. I couldn't connect. I can't vote on it.
Alan Brown? Abstain also. Bill Freeman? I don't think you were there either, so you'll see. So I will approve, and we have, we have four approvals in the motion passes to approve the minutes. Any ZEO report?
No.
No.
I think maybe while we're all here, everybody just gives a head count since we'll be back here in a week again. Anybody can't make next week?
I'll be there.
I'll try. I don't know if my internet will be good. I'm going to be away, but I'll figure it out.
For other business, with no further business from the commission, I'd make a motion to adjourn?
Some moves.
All in favor, just by a rose of your hands, all in favor?
Everyone.
It's you, Nanos. Take care. Thanks for all your time, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Bill, congratulations.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, thank you. Bye.
Okay, bye-bye.